Growing up, I love to watch movies. One of the movies I loved watching was the movie called Set It Off, starring Jada Pinkett and Queen Latifah. If you follow the storyline, you know that the essence of the movie, that they robbed several banks. Starting off in the movie, it seemed as though they had it all together. They had a plan, they had an itinerary. Everything was going well on the surface. On the last bank that they robbed, they were surrounded by police officers. Their plan failed, their itinerary failed, and the police was asking them to surrender. In the next six weeks, the Northwest Church of Christ, we are engaging in a body of teaching called Surrender. And what we're asking, we want you to be involved, we want you to be engaged, because there are men, there are women, who need to surrender their life to Jesus Christ. Maybe you just like the movie, maybe on the surface, things seem well. Maybe it seems like that you have it all together. But sooner or later, your plans fail, your itinerary fails, and it's time for you to surrender your life to Jesus Christ. We're gonna ask you to join us every Sunday morning, 11:30 a.m., right here via Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube, as we talk about Surrender. Are you ready to surrender your life to Jesus Christ? God bless. Tonight, as always, we're thankful, again grateful, that we're able to open up the Word of God and to study God's holy and divine Word. It is our prayer that you've come with the intent to open up the Word of God and to see what the Lord says. And just to help us along this journey in this Christian race that we're in. And so for this whole month, we've been in this thing called Surrender. And it's my prayer that what we studied so far on Sunday morning, also on Wednesday night, have been able to bless your walk with God and to be able to help us to grow closer to God. And it's my prayer that we all have looked at our lives individually and asked ourselves how we truly surrender, totally surrender to God. And the areas in our lives where we have not totally surrendered, the question becomes, will we totally surrender to God? And so what we want to do tonight, we want to continue our study. We want to look at the Word of God, and we want the Word of God to have free course in our lives. And so as we continue this thought in this body of teaching on Surrender, if tonight, I pray that as we study, that God speaks to you even on tonight in such a mighty way that God speaks to you. And in God speaking to you, you will look at your own life and ask yourself, what is the thing in my life that I have not yet totally surrendered to? What is it that I'm still holding on to that God is asking me to throw away or to cast away? So we're looking at that tonight as we talk about surrendering. Now, we have been working, using this working definition of surrendering, or what surrender is. And again, for clarity's sake, when I surrender, it's nothing more than me forfeiting my will and exchanging it for the will of God. So when I talk about surrender, we're literally talking about you and I making a decision. And that decision simply is that I'm going to exchange what I want, my desire for God's design. And so that's what we're out there tonight. We're out of us trying to discover, trying to figure out within the Word of God, how you and I, how we can make a conscious decision that we're going to surrender our lives to Jesus. Now, if you're honest tonight, all of us have had areas in our lives where we have not fully surrendered to. There have been, there are attitudes we have had that we tried to keep, right? There are times in our lives where we have wrestled with God. And in our wrestling with God, we're too busy trying to stay us. God is trying to change us, but we're too busy trying to stay us. And in the wrestling match with God, God every now and then got to break some stuff in order that you and I can realize, amen, that our hands are too short to box with God. And so as we continue this talk, or we ended, we started looking at Romans 12 last week. I want to finish Romans 12 tonight, looking at some things as it relates to surrender. And I pray after we get done, that you'll have questions or something will be said to help you and I to understand what it means to surrender. Now, let me start with saying this. Now, we looked at Romans chapter 12, but we did a survey of the book of Romans. And if you follow me last week, I shared with you the strong suit of why I love the book of Romans. Many theologians, many scholars consider the book of Romans to be what they call a filth gospel. Because Paul does not deal so much of the birth of Jesus, but he deals with the death, the bearer, and resurrection of Jesus. And so from Romans chapter 1 to Romans chapter 11, Paul shows us the doctrine of salvation. Say it one more time. So he deals with doctrine. So from Romans chapter 1 to Romans chapter 11, Paul's deal with the doctrine of salvation. He deals with the concept that we are justified by faith in Jesus Christ. He deals with the concept that we have been adopted a part of the family of God. We have been adopted in the family of God to the point where the Bible says that we are fellow heirs with Jesus Christ. In other words, whatever Jesus Christ has, we have a right to. Whatever is Jesus belongs to us, amen. And so Paul, in his doctrinal discourse, he shows us the doctrine of salvation by showing us that you are justified in Christ Jesus and that you are not saved by a law. You're not saved by crossing every T and dotting every I, but you are saved based upon the gospel of Jesus Christ, which helps us to be made right with God, right? So when you obeyed the gospel, when you was baptized for the remission of your sins, God looked at you as righteous. You became justified before God. You had right standing before the Lord. And so from Romans chapter 1 to Romans chapter 11, we see the doctrine of salvation. And then we get to chapter 12. And Paul says, since you understand the doctrine of salvation, then you need to understand your duty concerning your salvation. I need you to notice that. From chapter 1 to chapter 11, he shows us doctrine. We get to chapter 12 of Romans, and he shows us duty. He says, since you understand, you've been justified. Since you understand, you've been sanctified. Since you understand that you have been adopted into the family of God. Since you understand the doctrine of salvation, now let me help you to understand your duty concerning salvation. And so when you look at Romans chapter 12, he starts off by saying, what, "I proceed," or "I beg you, by the mercies of God," then what? "You present your bodies a living sacrifice, holy and acceptable unto God, which is your reasonable or spiritual worship to God." Now, we looked at that on last week, and we discovered that Paul says, "I'm begging you by the mercies of God." We define what mercies are, right? That it's not just mercy, but it's mercies, right? And based upon the mercies of God, based upon what he talked about for Romans chapter 1 to chapter 11, he's begging us, right? To present our bodies a living sacrifice. He says, watch what he says, "which is your reasonable service," or "spiritual worship." I think it's a better translation. Now, it's interesting that he says, "it is your spiritual worship when you allow me to use your body as instruments." Y'all follow that? Your bodies, our bodies, are used as instruments because we're giving ourselves as a living sacrifice, right? Which is our spiritual worship. Notice what worship is. Worship is not when you come on Sunday and sing a song. That is an expression of worship, but it's not worship. Bless the name of Jesus. Worship consists when God uses you and I as instruments, amen, 365 days, 52 weeks, and four seasons. It's spiritual worship. So this is the question I want to entertain tonight. And if I can entertain this question tonight, it'll be a blessing to us. The question that I want to entertain tonight is, how do I pay God back? How do I pay Him back? That's a question that I need us to entertain tonight. How do I pay God back? Now, before you think I'm contradicting myself, let me tell you that the answer to that question is simple. You can't. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's the question. The question is, how do I pay God back? The answer is simple. You can't. But haven't you ever been to a point in your life when God has done something for you? All the grace, all the mercy, everything He brought you out of, and you found yourself between a rock and a hard place? And you said to yourself, "I just want to do something to pay God back." Have you ever said that to yourself? Have you ever been like, "God has been so good to me, I gotta give you something," right? You can't though. The reality is, the Bible says, your righteousness, your own righteousness is like filthy rags. So we cannot pay God back, right? But what you can do, you can surrender. See how simple that was? See, God says, "I showed you," from Romans 1 to Romans chapter 11, doctrine, doctrine of salvation. But now I'm showing you duty. Doctrine is good because we need to understand healthy teaching. So you need to understand something about your salvation to know that it's not something that you can earn. It's not something that, 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 that's something that you can pay God for. So you need to understand that. But you do have a duty. I need us to be very, very clear on that. Although you and I cannot pay God back, we do have a duty to God. Because of what He's done for us, it's something inside of us that says, "God, you've been so good to me. And because you have been so good to me, God, at least what I can do is surrender to you." So I want us to really see this. I want us to understand. So how do I pay God back? You can't, but you can surrender. Now, I need you to notice what the text says. And I'll be reading tonight, I'll be reading from the New Living Translations, or Translation, and you still can read from the CD. I just want to give us a broader understanding of a translation tonight. But I want you to understand something. He says that you present your body, watch this, "as a living sacrifice." Now, if you're taking notes, underline the word "living sacrifice," right? Because when you surrender, you do sacrifice. You ought to be a living sacrifice, amen. Now, it's interesting, in the Old Testament, in the Old Testament, what they would do when they were sacrificed to God at the temple, they would have to cut bulls and goats and give dead sacrifices, right? But notice what he's calling us to do, is not to give a dead sacrifice, but he's calling us to give a living sacrifice. And he says, "the living sacrifice is your body." We talked about that last week. The living sacrifice is your body being an instrument. It's you making a decision that you're gonna surrender. Now, let me tell you something about sacrifice. A sacrifice, especially if it's alive, brings pain. So it's cute to talk about sacrifice when it's pain-free. It's very religious to talk about sacrifice when you are not experiencing pain. But I want you to know tonight that what God is saying to us, according to Paul, that you can't pay Him back, but you can surrender. How do I surrender? I present my body a living sacrifice. But if I'm gonna do that, the question becomes, sacrifice comes with pain, which lets me know that you can't sacrifice to God and not expect to experience some level of pain. And I told y'all this before, sometimes as the people of God and as the children of God, we don't like to suffer. We don't like to experience pain. Nobody volunteers to have pain in their life. Nobody says, "Oh, God, let me experience that particular heartache, that particular valley, that particular pain." Nobody does that. But I want you to understand tonight that God, everybody's on line tonight, I want you to know, God wants you to surrender. He wants your body to be a living sacrifice. And if your body is going to be a living sacrifice, he says, "it comes with pain." But although it comes with pain, there is purpose behind the pain. My God. See, tonight, I want us to embrace this concept of pain. Because as human beings, we tend to run from it. We don't want to embrace it. But I just want to give you a mindset to have that when you experience pain because you're presenting your body as a living sacrifice, have in your mind, "God, there must be some purpose behind this pain." I don't like it. I don't like what I'm experiencing. I don't like the situation I'm in. I don't like the storm that I'm facing. But God, if I'm experiencing pain, God, I must know there must be purpose behind the pain. And I don't know who I'm talking to tonight. You may be in a place right now that you say to yourself, "God, I'm experiencing pain." Well, if you have decided to be a follower of Jesus, if you have decided that you're going to present your body a living sacrifice, if you have decided that, "Lord, I'm ready to surrender to you," I want you to know that pain is involved. And because pain is involved, you got to adopt the mindset, "if I experience this pain, then God, there must be purpose behind." Now, I know you don't like that, because I don't like it either. I know you don't like it because when you in the middle of it, you want it to be done. Anybody know what I'm talking about? You're in the midst of it, and you want it to go away. You don't want to experience it. You don't want to feel it. But you gotta know, if He's your king and you are His property, you belong to Him, you gotta know there has to be purpose behind my pain. And I don't know who needs to hear that tonight, but before you go to sleep, and whatever you wrestling with and what you dealing with and what circumstance you facing, you gotta have the adopt the mindset, "there must be some type of purpose behind my pain." And so this is what I want to ask. How do I present my body a living sacrifice? If my body is the instrument in which God is gonna use in order to get glory? If I have decided that I'm going to be a follower and I'm gonna yield to Him? Then God, my question, the question becomes, how do I present my body a living sacrifice? Here's the first thing. You present your body as a living sacrifice by finding your function in the body. Let me deal with that, let me exegete that just a minute here in Romans chapter 12. How do I make my, what does being a living sacrifice all about? It means, how do I do that? I have to find my function in the body. I want to surrender to God. Surrender and sacrifice comes with pain. I got that, God? Well, if it comes with pain, what I gotta do? Wait a minute. You gotta be, you gotta find your function in the body of Christ. You gotta find your function. In other words, God purposely puts you in the body on purpose to function in a certain way. And if you are part of the body and you're not fulfilling your function, then it's impossible for you making your body a living sacrifice. I said something. It is not just you saying that you are a living sacrifice, but you have a duty. And your duty is, is to find your function in the body of Christ. Lord have mercy. Let me read, let me read from Romans chapter 12, from the New Living, let me read verses 3 through 8 for us. Watch what the Bible says. The Bible says, "because of the privilege and authority God has given me." Watch this. "I give each of you this warning." Watch this. "Don't think you are better than you really are." In other words, "don't think you are the dogs by-wine that catch me out." Bless the name of Jesus. Be honest of your evaluation of yourselves, measuring yourselves by faith God has given us. Look at verse number four. "Just as our bodies have been, have many parts, each part has special function." So it is with Christ's body, watch this, "we are many parts of that one body, and we all belong to each other." Notice what he does. He compares your physical body to the body of Christ. And notice what he says. "Each and every one of us who are part of the body of Christ, the church of my Lord," he says, "you got a function." Your fingers have a function. Your toes have a function. Your heart has a function. Your eyes, your mouth has a function. There is no body part you have on your physical body that does not have a function and play a part into your everyday life. So just like your physical body has a function, then we must take notice that we in the body of Christ have a function. My question to you, church, have you found your function in the body? Because if you have not found your function, that means that you're not operating in a place that God will have you to operate in. Bless the name of, everybody on this line tonight has a gift from God. When you got baptized in Christ for the remission of your sins, when that happened, the Holy Spirit gives us two things. As we grow, we get fruit, but also it gives us gifts. Did you get that? You got fruit, you got gifts. Fruit comes as time goes, and you mature in Christ, you begin to display fruit, where the Bible describes the fruit of the Spirit with those nine characteristics that are listed in Galatians 5. However, there is another component to the gift, to you receiving the Spirit of God. And that component is that God gives you and I gifts for the body. Now, I need you to notice something, that your gift is never for you. Let me remind us tonight that when God gives you a gift, God never gives you the gift for your ego. He doesn't do that. The gift that God gives us is for us to edify or to build up His body. So I need, if I'm going to be a living sacrifice, then that means I gotta find my function in the body. Because it's weird if you a body part and you not carrying out your function. How are you a part of a body and you're not carrying out your function within the body? And I want us to know tonight, from the Word of God, that if you are a member of this blood-bought institution, the church, God looks for you to be more than just a pure member. He looks for you to be more than just somebody who's coming to receive. But He's looking for you to be somebody who can contribute to the body of Christ. Now, listen. I've said this before, but for those who have never heard me say it, let me say it again, that God has given you a gift, and you are known as your gift, not because you say it's your gift, but you are known as your gift when other folks confirm it's your gift and folks are being edified. Now, if nobody is being edified and nobody confirms it's your gift, then chances are, it ain't your gift. Lord have mercy. That I think as a body of believers, the church does a injustice to allow people to do things in the body that's not their gift, just to help them with their ego. I want to suggest tonight that when we make our bodies a living sacrifice to God, we find our function in the body of Christ. And when we find our function in the body of Christ, it is demonstrated through our guilt. And whatever that gift is that God has given you, God wants you to operate in the gift. Somebody saying, "Man, you don't know how dysfunctional I am. You don't know the stuff that I done did. You don't know all the stuff I done went through and been through." God says, "Listen, you need to be dysfunctional, dysfunctional in order for me to even operate in your gift and in the perfect." God don't use perfect people. God only use imperfect people. He uses imperfect people to perfect people because God says, "although you may look like you're dysfunctional," God says, "I would take that dysfunction and make you functional in the body of Christ." Man, what type of God wouldn't you want to serve? Who can take somebody who was on the street doing God knows what and change his life or her life around and then use them as a instrument to bring other people to Jesus? Now, notice what he says. He says that, listen, "we belong to each other. We are functioning body parts. We belong." But watch what this says. He begins, he goes on, he says in verse number 6, "in His grace," God has given us different gifts for doing different things well. Did you get that? Everybody at Northwest do not possess the same gift. I want you to get that. We don't all have the same gift because God has purpose us in the body as He see pleased for a particular reason or for a particular time. Now, watch this. It says, "just as our bodies have been," okay, let me drop down to verse 6 again. So if God has given you, watch this, verse 6, "in His grace," watch this, "God has given us different gifts for doing certain things as well." Lot of part of verse 6. So if God has given you the ability to prophesy, speak out with as much faith as God has given you. Now, let me tell us, this Greek word prophecy here is not the same prophecy what we read in Old Testament theology with seers. This is not the same type of prophecy. This particular prophecy from its original word, it means to speak inspired messages. This type of prophecy is suggesting preaching. It's suggesting somebody who has been gifted enough to stand before God's people and to preach the Word of God in such a way that can inspire other people to come to Jesus, amen. So when you see a man who preaches the gospel of Jesus Christ and is edifying to the body of Christ, right? Is edified to the body, and other folk are being blessed by, and they confirm, they confirm to that man, it's their gift. It's a gift God has given for the body, not for the man. I need you to get that. Preaching, that is a gift, not for a man's ego. Name for his ego. It's God, it's God given, it's given to him by God, not to boost his ego, but to edify the body of Christ. And so whenever, if a man is up preaching, bless the name of Jesus, and ain't nobody being edified, ain't nobody, ain't souls ain't being saved, then it cannot be possible that his gift. And I pray for the day that we as a fellowship, amen, will stop allowing men to get up and to function in a capacity to preach and disrespect the pulpit just because they want to get up and say something. Bless the name of Jesus. I pray for today that just because a good brother feel like he got a word on his lips, but it ain't his gift because nobody's being edified, nobody's being built up, but the only person that feels good after the sermon is him. Because nobody's being edified, nobody's being built up, but the only person that feels good after the sermon is him. We gotta stop disrespecting God ordained gifts in the body of Christ. That's why everybody now think they a preacher, because we have did a poor job. Of, uh, uh, we have encouraged people, men. To stand in the pulpit just because they a man and they wanna preach, but they're not gifted. And so here we have it, that in the body of Christ, what we have to understand, he says, when you preach. When you probably, do it with all you got. With every bit of part of it, do it, why? Because I'm trying to, that's my, that's your function. Right, but watch what else he says, he says, uh, in a lot, he says, speaking as much as faith as God has given you, look at verse seven. He says, if your, if your gift is serving others. Serve them well. Now I need to look at this word serving. Because this is a gift within itself. This gift is our people. Who does not wait. Until somebody tell them there's a need before them to fulfill it. These are individuals in the body who see the need. And they meet the need when they see the need. They don't need you to tell them it needs to be done, they see it and they go out and do it. Because they see the need needs to get done. Now I'm talking about finding your function, right? Because your function, God has given us gifts. He used to, is it servant, serve and do it well. Right, don't serve to be put in the bulletin. Don't serve for your name to be called, don't serve because you wanna pat on the back. But you're serving because what you're doing, you have found your function in the body. And because I found my function in the body, watch this, God is pleased and the body is being edified. We need more servants in the body of Christ. Who know how to serve well. Who can serve and don't have to tell nobody about it after they serve. Who can serve and after they get done, they say, God, I hope you was pleased with it. Because what I'm doing, God, I'm presenting my body a living sacrifice, how do I do it, I have found my function. And see, when you find your function, you get lost in it. I wish I had a church tonight, when, when, when you find your function, you, you get lost in it. In other words, nobody can keep you from doing it. It just comes out of you because you remember about all that mercy you got. You remember all the doctrine of salvation that you understand, you remember how God has been so good to you. And because you sat up on an offering and surrender, I'm gonna give my body a living sacrifice and I have found my function. What I'm about to do, I'm a servant and I'm a servant well. If I'm gonna be the usher, I'm gonna be the best usher they're gonna be. Bless the name, ain't nobody gonna hold that door like me. If I'm gonna pass out bulletins, I'm, ain't nobody gonna do it like me, because I'm servant, I'm a servant. And when I learn to do, to serve, I serve well, I do it at best. I don't do, see, what we have to understand, when you have a gift. And God has given you that gift. Your gift, it touches others in ways that you don't even realize. Amen, when you serve and you serve well, and that's your gift of serving. Now all of us ought to be servants, right, everybody ought to serve, but there are people who go above and beyond. This is, I believe that's what, what, what Paul is after, he's dealing with people who go above and beyond and they're sir. They have found their function in the body of Christ. And they serve, but now, well, not only serve, but watch what he said, he says, if your gift is serving, others serve well. If you are a teacher, watch this, teach well. Now I love this, this word, if you go back and do a study on the word teach here, the teacher. It is not somebody who, uh, just give it, who just give instructions. No. This is a person who can teach. In such a way. And explain what they're teaching on the word of God in such a way. That anybody can understand it. And after they, after they get done, they'll say, man, God was speaking to me about that. Amen, it is a person, see, the person who's a teacher is not just somebody who's a lecturer. Y'all do know that somebody can lecture and not teach you nothing. They can read off a piece of paper, bless the name of Jesus, tell you the research they came up with, but they can't explain the research. They, they can lecture, but that, he says, if they teach. Let them, let them, let them do it well, in other words, they are teachers. And they know how to explain the word of God. Right, they know how to do it and they stay in they lane. They have found their place in the body. Bless the name of Jesus, I recognize that my gift is preaching and teaching. Uh, that's a gift God has given me. To preach, to preach the word and to teach the word is a God ordained gift. No man gave it to me, God gave it to me, right? And because God gave it to me, I'm, I'm, I'm lost in that gift. That I don't have to go outside my gift, that ain't my gift to compete with somebody else. Because in the body of Christ, we don't compete, we complement. In the body of Christ, if I, I know I can't sing, bless the name of Jesus. And if, if, uh, if, if, what, what sense would it make? Me trying to say I can sing, uh, amen, and I got Andre Ashford and. And, 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 and brother Cooper and Paul Ward in the audience, but I'm gonna, I, it's my turn to sing, I don't want them, I wanna sing today. See, that's ego. And in our, and in our, in our fellowship, we got a lot of egos. It don't become about God, it becomes about them, because now you think it's your turn because you wanna sing. It's ego. But when I have a gift. And up in the body of Christ is being edified by the gift. I don't oper, I, I don't leave my lane and to operate in another lane. I hope I'm making sense tonight, you gotta find your place. In the body, that's how you give your body as a living sacrifice. Why I'm mad at you because I can't sing like you, or I can't preach like you, or I can't teach like, I can't serve like you, I find my gift. In the body, and that's a, now when you ain't doing nothing, that's what becomes a problem, because that's mean you're not functioning. You're not functioning, now watch what is that, he says, now watch where he goes to these gift, he says, if your gift is to encourage others. Encouraging others, be encouraging. Do you not know there are some people? Who have the gift to encourage other people? Amen, there now, there are some of us, now we making, you know, there are some of us who don't have a gift to encourage other people like other folk can. There are some people who can walk in a room and smile and talk and say something in such a way. That while you are in your, in your, in your valley, they can encourage you even while you in your valley. That's a, that's a, that's a gift within itself. You ought to find your place in the body and you ought to be the first one to call somebody when they sick. Or when they down. Or when they don't know how they gonna do in it, how they gonna make it out of it, you ought to be the first one that says, let me talk to you. Let me tell you, it's gonna be alright, let me tell you, let me share with you that God gonna make a way somehow, because that's your gift. Watch what it say, it says, if it's giving. Give generously. Now we all know we supposed to give, right? We all know we ought to give ten and beyond, we ought to know we all, we are grace givers. Grace givers are people who have received the grace of God, and because of the grace of God. You give God above a tenth of your earnings because of you are a ju, you are understanding that you are a grace giver. However, this person who gives, this is an individual. Who has the ability to know how to make money. And they use the money they make to bless other people. They use their finances to edify the body of Christ. They see a need in the body and they use it because it's their gift. They know how to make money in the world and they take, but they say that they take their same knowledge. Their same expert expertise and they say, if I can do it for the world, if I can do it from A, A and B C company. I can do it for the lowest church, so I take the gift I have. And I take it for, and use it for the kingdom of God in order for other people to be blessed. These are usually people who does beyond the tie and the offering. These are people who will see somebody in need and go buy their groceries for them. And say, don't tell nobody, I just wanna bless you today. Who have the ability, they have the finance, ain't talking about folks who ain't got it, I'm talking about folks who got it. And say, I got all of these finances. And somebody can be blessed by. These ain't greedy folks. These ain't stingy folks, these are people who says, I wanna bless the body of Christ. So you give, right? But watch this, it says. Um, if God has given you a leadership ability. Take the responsibility, watch this, seriously. It gives the connotation of somebody who knows how to stir shit. Right, somebody who has the ability to be a leader. Knows how to lead, knows how to put things in place and lead, right? Now a leader is not a manager. He's not a dictator. But a leader is somebody who knows how to take somebody from point A to point B. I can, a leader is somebody who can take somebody in an immature state. And develop them and make them a mature individual, to take them from this level to that level, that is a leader. And he says, when you do, when you assume leadership. Whatever the, whatever the leadership role is, he says you need to take, do, be responsible for, in other words, that's a gift. Everybody does not have the gift of leadership. Bless the name, there are some people who are too passive to be leaders. Amen, and just because you a man don't mean you a leader. In the sense of leading in a gift of leadership. You're leading in your own right, leading yourself, but in the gift of leadership. Amen, that's not, that's not it, and so when I talk about leadership, oftentimes people only think about preachers, elders and deacons. Not so, when I mean leadership, I'm saying in the body of Christ. You can take a project on and you can lead it and direct it and give direction towards it in such a way that it's clear. And it's, uh, is, we already know, man, that's good leadership. Because somebody else couldn't do, do the math, they couldn't deal with the math. But you did it, it's a form of, it's a gift, right, so watch what he says, he says, um. He says, take it seriously, but watch what is that, he said, if you, if you have the gift. Watch this, showing kindness to others, or, or this word kindness means mercy for others, do it gladly. Watch this, there are people in the body of Christ. Who have the gift. Of being merciful to other people. That's a gift. Bless the name of Jesus, now we all should be merciful to people. But there are people in the body of Christ. Who are gifted. In showing mercy to other people, in other words, these are people that you want around you when you messed up. These are people you want around you, amen, who, when you find yourself in a ditch and in a hole. These are people that when you messed up, you want these mercy showers to show up. Because when they show mercy towards you, it's encouraging towards you, now the teacher who has the gift of teaching. Can instruct and explain scripture and tell them why they did what they did and why it was wrong. Bless the name, they can show them that. But when you in a ditch. And when you have fallen. How many you know when you messed up, you don't need nobody to tell you, you messed up? How many of you know if you find yourself in a hole, you don't need nobody looking over the hole, asking you how you get down there? Did you, was you watching where you was going, listen, man, we ain't got time for all that right now, I'm in a hole. Can you throw the rope down, allow me to get up? And we'll talk about that some other time, but some of us, because encouragement and showing mercy ain't our gift. As soon as somebody make a mistake, in the midst of the mistake, we wanna tell them why, what they did wrong. And why they did wrong and how they could avoid it the pitfall, I understand all of that, but that ain't the time, give me a mercy shower. Mercy shower shows up. And when they show up, that man, I find myself in that ditch. And you to pull me out of it, now listen, I'll talk to the teacher later, I'll talk to the preacher later. I need a mercy shower to help me along the way, and then we'll figure out how I can avoid this. I hope that makes sense, and so here, well, it's interesting, in the body of Christ, sometimes. The mercy, sometimes members of the body. They despise the mercy shower. Because they think the mercy shower is showing too much compassion. But you gotta realize that ain't your gift. The reason it seems like to you is too much compassion, because that ain't your gift. God knew that who is gonna need some mercy showers at the Northwest church, because we got folk who fall down every now and then. So we need some mercy showers, to show up at the ditch. And when I show up at the ditch, then I know I need some folk to come by my way and encourage me while I'm down in there. Do y'all see that, so he says, he says to us, find your function. If you wanna make your body a living sacrifice, if you wanna be a living sacrifice, you gotta find your function in the body of Christ. And when you find your function in the body of Christ, when that happens, God says, now you got it. God says, now you can operate. Now you can function in such a way. Bless the name of Jesus, that will help you. Uh, to understand that you can't pay me back, but you can surrender, and I'm afraid tonight. That so many have not surrendered. Because they have not, they're not even functioning in the body. You are part of a, you're part of the body. But you're not even doing what's necessary. You're not even doing the very, the, the thing that God has created you to do in the body. When God created you, he did not, you was not born to do a nine to five. I'm sorry to tell you that, you weren't born to, 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 to get a 401K. Now, now all of that is good and is necessary in his own right, but the purpose of the reason you was born, your purpose is greater than that. So your nine to five is what you do while you live, but it's not while you live. Did you catch that? Your nine to five is what you do while you live. But it's not while you live. But we have confused our while and our why. My why is to make sure I find my function in the body of Christ. So for the simple fold purpose that people. That people in the body. That the church of my Lord, the church of Christ, folks in it can be edified for his glory. So I'm, I'm not gonna finish tonight, but let me give you the second one. Of how you make your, how you make your body a living sacrifice, how to be a living sacrifice, number one, I told you, you find your function in the body. Number two. Um, you find, you, number two, you make yourself a living sacrifice by obeying the rules. Because of the relationship. We, we gonna end with this, I got one more, but I'll show it next week. Uh, obeying the rules because of the relationship, now, I, I told you. That relationship. Matters with God, your relationship with God matters, right? But we have a duty. Would you have a duty, I'm gonna answer that sister car where I answered that just shortly, uh, but we do have a duty. And our duty. Yeah, is to obey the rules that God has. Because of the relationship, now notice what I did not say. I'm not obeying the rules because I'm afraid to go to hell. That's not why I'm obeying the rules, I'm not obeying the rules because I think God gonna get me. That's a bad way to live, you know, many Christians, the average Christian, they obey rules only because they feel like God gonna get them if they don't do it. The average Christian obey rules, what God says, be, only because. Uh, they think that if they do it, God gonna hold, I don't know, you obey the rules. Because of the relationship. That you have with King Jesus. That's why you do it, and because of the relationship, why do I have this relationship? Do y'all just, I just showed you doctrine, the doctrine of salvation, I just showed you, I'm justified, I'm sanctified, I'm a, I'm, I'm a fellow heir of Christ Jesus. I'm all of that, man, because of this relationship, I don't mind doing nothing he told me to do. Bless the name of Jesus, you found a wife, you, I mean, you got a, you got a wife who got a good husband. Amen, and the relation, I mean, he did all this sacrificing, he did. Amen. And the relation, I mean, he did all this sacrifice, he did all that for their wife. Man, their wife would do anything uh, that, that, that he asked her to do because of the relationship. It's not, it's not because I'm forced. It's not because I feel like I'm gonna get in trouble. No. It's because of the relationship and I long for the day that members of the church of Christ, where we have the mindset that I do what I do. I live for the Lord. I work for him, not because I'm afraid to go to hell, but I do what I do because of how much Jesus loves me. Bless the name. Now, I need you to notice something. We got three minutes. Let me see, can I get something in? Watch what it says. Um, in Romans, uh, chapter twelve and, uh, verse number nine. Watch what it say. It said, don't just pretend to love others. Really love them. Y'all missed it. Don't just pretend to love folk. Really love them. Third times the charm preacher. Don't just pretend to love others. Really love others. In other words, what I want you to do, I want you to obey this rule of loving folk, the rule of love. Not because of the fact that I'm, because of the fact that you scared I'm gonna get you, but love folk and love your brother and sister in Christ because of the relationship I have with you. Now, what is love? Love is the word agape, right? Unconditional love, loving without conditions. But I like, also like the definition that I love you because I'm doing what's best for you in spite of you. So in other words, when I love you, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do what's in your best interest, even when you don't think it's in your best interest. Bless the name of Jesus. When God loved us, he did what was best for us. How did he do it? He gave his only begotten son named Jesus. He did what was best for us in spite of us, even when we were, we was dead, we was dead wrong. He did what, he said, when you love folk like that, you obey the rules. You obey the rules because of a relationship with Jesus and I'm gonna love you. I'm gonna do what's best for you in spite of you. Watch what it say. It says, don't pretend to love others, really love them, hate what is wrong, hold tightly to what is good. Watch this. Love each other with genuine affection. In other words, be authentic. Don't, 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 don't love me only in public, love me in private. Bless the name of, what, what you mean preacher? I need you to love me. I don't need you to shake my hand and say, hey, how you doing, brother beard? I hope your day was going well. And then soon as I turn my back, you dogging me. Don't pretend. Genuinely love me. Love me with my flaws and everything. Because you remember, if I got flaws, that mean you got some too. And when I, and see, what, what happens is the reason, the reason it's so easy to look down on other people is because you comparing yourself to other people. When you compare yourself to other people, you make yourself look real good. Because you can see somebody else's flaws and you say, I ain't doing what they doing and you feel good about you because now you said, what's the shame on them? Why they doing that? But can, but when you stop comparing yourself to other people and start comparing yourself to God, and let me see how you feel. Because now when you compare yourself to God, let me see, do you got the same energy you had when you compared yourself to John Doe? See, here it is. Love me genuinely. It need to be authentic. And watch this. Take the light. Watch this. In honoring each other. In other words, I need you to take the light in taking time and celebrating somebody else. Can, can, what, this is a rule, this is a rule, rule of love, but I'm obeying these rules because of my relationship with my daddy and my big brother. My big brother, my eldest brother Jesus, because of my eldest brother and because of my daddy, watch what I'm doing. I'm obeying these rules because of our relationship and I'm gonna love you genuinely and what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna encourage you. I'm going to honor you. But watch what it said. This is what I'm, I'm, I'm for real. This is gonna be my last verse, verse eleven. Never be lazy, but work hard and serve the Lord enthusiastically. Now, watch what it says. Don't be lazy, but work hard. Now, the word work hard, in some translations, it says, uh, serve the Lord fervently or boiling over. It say, it come to get that connotation. But I thought this word, uh, lazy was very interesting. Uh, don't be lazy. Cause what we talking about? We talking about giving out, we talking about making our bodies a living sacrifice. How do you do that? You do that by obeying the rules because of relationship. But notice what he says. After he said all of that, he says, don't be lazy. Now, the word lazy in this original language, it means to shrink back, to hold back or to hesitate. Y'all got that? Be reluctant. Lazy. It's not, it don't mean just not doing nothing. That's not what Paul is talking about. Paul is talking about somebody who is holding back. What you holding back? Your gifts. The gift God has given you hold back on. You're hesitant to use it. That's being lazy. That's being idle. When you know you have a gift of organization, but you don't wanna use it. You're holding back on God. You have the gift of speaking, but you don't wanna speak when it's time to speak. You're holding back on God. You're being lazy. Lazy is not just being, uh, not, not just being idle. It, it's the connotation, the Greek connotation means, why you holding back? Tonight, you can't be a living sacrifice. You know why? Because you holding back. Cause you thought it was your gift, you thought it was your gift, not knowing you was only a steward of it. It don't even belong to you. But God says, you holding back. And then he says, what I want you to do, he says, I want you to work hard. Or he says fervently. Now, this word means it's a eagerness, uh, uh, eagerness. It's diligent. It is when you work hard and you do it fervently, man, you really wanna do it. You can't wait to do it. You eagerly serve the Lord. Can't wait to Bible class. Can't wait to Wednesday night. Bless the name. Can't wait to, 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 to the park and pray. Can't wait to eagerly serve God. What are you doing? I'm, I'm presenting my body, a living sacrifice. My body is the instrument, right? My body is the instrument. I found my function in the body, but I'm obeying the rules because of the relationship. Now, what we'll do on next week, we'll finish Romans twelve. We'll finish out Romans twelve. I'll finish that. Uh, Romans twelve, cause that's a beautiful passage of scripture. The whole book of Romans is beautiful, but, but, because we ran out of time, we'll finish all of that. Uh, and I wanna, I just wanna encourage us that it's painful when you find your function in the body. It's painful because now you gotta remove yourself out the way. You gotta move yourself, you gotta surrender and allow God to use you. It's painful that you gotta obey the rules because of the relationship. Sometimes it's painful because sometimes you, you in the way from your own blessing. You're in the way of your, of God doing what he supposed to do, all because of you. And so what we wanna do tonight, we want to surrender. We want to put that on our hearts. We want to surrender. And it's my prayer, uh, that you will get to a point in your Christian, your Christianity and in your growth with God, that you will find yourself in a way where you say, God, I just surrender. And I'm talking about totally surrender. I ain't talking about just talking about it. I'm talking about really surrendering to God. Let me, uh, answer this question. Uh, it says, will you always have the, the same function as you mature spiritually or grow older? Uh, I don't believe so. I believe, uh, I, I believe that the gift God has given us, uh, I believe he gives us the gift, but it's not necessarily we saying to stay in the same function. When I say function, I can have a gift in an area and still function in different capacities and different ministries, right? If I got the gift of hospitality, if that's my gift or a gift of giving, I can function in so many different arenas in the church. So, uh, the function of it, right? I believe that's your gift, but I think the more you grow in God, that when that, when your fruit, when you grow in the fruit, the fruit of the spirit, right? You grow and you're growing with God, God begins to open up different dimensions in your life. He'll begins to show you things. And here's the thing. Um, Ephesians four, if we, we, church, when you get a chance, go read that Ephesians four. Uh, Paul says it this way. Paul says, think around verse number twelve, but Paul says, God give gifts to men, right? And he named the gifts that he gave to me. He named the gifts. Where, uh, and he says, God, then the men who are a gift, he tells these men that they are gifts to the church. So you'll read about apostles and all of those things. We, we know apostles are not, there are no living apostles today. In that particular text, Ephesians four, is, is the only two operating gifts that we have in Ephesians four is the evangelists and pastoring teachers, which is a compound word there in the Greek language, pastoring teacher. Uh, those are the two Greek words, we, I mean, two, uh, two gifts we have in the body that, that are told to equip the saints to do the work of ministry. So watch this. The question is, will you always have the same function as, as you mature, oh, uh, spiritual, mature spiritual or grow older? Well, it's the evangelists and those pastoring teachers responsibility to equip the church to do the work of ministry. So one of my functions as an evangelist is to make sure members of Northwest operating their gift is my responsibility to equip you to do the work of ministry. That's why I say, that's why I hold the belief, you can't be spiritually homeless. You can't say you a, 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 a functioning body part and not a part of a local congregation. You can't be floating around because who's going to equip you for the work of ministry? And so, uh, I believe that comes sister, uh, Carlwell with, with great leadership and leadership knowing their function. My function, I, I'm not, you know, I, one day I'm gonna do the, a study on the work of the evangelist. So people can understand the, the evangelists do more than just preach. One of my functions is to make sure you are equipped in such a way that you can do the work of ministry, that you can do it and you can bring other folks as Jesus Christ. So I try to, I hope I answered it the best as I, I could. Uh, let me see. Uh, okay. Yeah. So, yeah. So, yeah. So, uh, uh, I pray that, uh, that answer. They might have any more questions, any other questions? Before we close tonight, any other questions? If your gift is no longer edifying the body, will God remove the gift from you? Will he give it to someone else or those, or those talents? So I believe that God is Christ church and he knows what he's doing. And sometimes, uh, again, it goes right back to leadership. If you're, if, if, uh, as, I'm gonna speak for me, if I'm, I'm the man of God at Northwest and when somebody stop operating under the, a gift that's edifying to the body of Christ, I believe is my responsibility as the evangelist is to have that talk and have that discussion. Uh, I think so many times we are so, uh, afraid to offend people that we offend God. And what we'll do is we afraid to offend people, but with the same thing, we offend God because we afraid to offend people. Well, I really believe that I rather offend you than to offend God. And if you are really growing in your walk with God, that as an evangelist, when I say, let's try to move you to a different area, because everybody has a gift. You won't be without a gift. If you are a member of the body of Christ, there's no such thing that you don't have a gift. You may not know what it is yet, but it don't mean you don't have a gift. There's nobody in the body of Christ who does not have a gift. Nobody. I mean that. You may not know what it is, but you have a gift. And so, uh, when you have a gift, God, you may not, you may fail to operate in this area. You're not edifying in this area, but we'll find some other area where you do edify the body. So I don't believe he takes anything. I believe you are just shifting in a different area. Right? Um, and so thi- this type of conversation needs to be had, especially among our fellowship, because I think sometimes we believe just because we are ten of, oh, of what we call a worship service. We think that's enough for God. And we do it out of routine. You know, some people go to church every Sunday because that's what they always done. There was no real understanding of what it, what, what it was all about. There was no such thing as them understanding gifts and understanding the body of Christ. Many, the average person think that they, they wanna, what can they get out the church, relic, what they can put in? So what can I do to edify the whole body of Christ in particular? So I think it's a definite conversation worth having that we need to understand that I'm a functioning body part. Now, if you ain't a functioning body part, now if you go to the doctor and your leg is got a, a green gang, you got green gang and you, 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 it's no longer working, right? And, uh, guess what they gonna do to their foot? They ain't gonna keep it on it, cause when it happens, they gonna cut it off. Right? They gonna, they gonna do, they gonna dismiss it because it's ain't a functioning body part. Right? And sometimes, sometimes doctors will tell you, well, you don't need it. You don't need that body. Well, God gave it to me. I need it. I probably can live without it. But I need it. Bless the name of Jesus. Well, you don't need, really need that kidney. Well, I need both my kidneys, but I probably can live without it. Right? But I need it. And so here's the thing. I'm afraid, and see this, and this is what I believe, and I said this before, I said this to my preacher friends, that if I ever decide that I'm not gonna preach again and I'm never gonna teach again, I don't believe I'll live long. I strong, I believe it with all my heart. I believe if I decided to pour, I'll pour a Jonah on God and say, God, man, you can have this, right? I'm done. I strongly believe, God said, well, I guess you fulfill, fulfill your purpose. Time to come home. Right? So I made up in my mind that I'm going, when I die, I'm gonna die empty. When I die, I'm gonna die empty. So when I die, it's gonna be saying, God, I did everything I could do. I'm empty. I have emptied myself because I've tried to do everything I did to do on earth. So I hope they answer that question. Uh, any other, um, any other, uh, questions or prayer requests tonight? We're gonna close tonight. On that note, any, uh, any other questions or prayer request? Bless the name of Jesus.